And then I just wanted to start by welcoming everyone. Thank you so much for joining. My name is Rona Taylor. I'm the president of the Shirley Chisholm Democratic Club. We were established on Valentine's Day in 2012 and we are committed to Shirley Chisholm's mission of both political engagement and community engagement. And so when our meetings are often designed around topics that will support people in the community being more civically engaged. And so before we get started, I wanted to offer, I see that we have the Honorable Susan Quirk here and also Honorable Judge Dwayne Paul. If you all wanted to bring greetings before we get started. Yes, no? Okay. So I guess we will, we'll just jump in. I wanted to just take a couple of minutes to introduce our guest this evening, who's Mr. Dan Kaminsky. He works as a policy manager at the Citizens Union Foundation and Citizens, the Citizens Union Foundation is a good government group that's been working to reform New York City and state government by fostering accountability, accessibility, transparency, honesty, and the highest ethical standards since 1897. It's been devoted, they have devoted themselves to holding our government accountable and the enfranchisement of all New Yorkers. Additionally, they have been monitoring the city and state redistricting process for decades and advocating to make it more open there and independent. So before you all joined, I was sharing that the first, the first public hearing was actually today, right, Dan? Is that true?
So for the city council process, and I'll absolutely go over this and make sure people know, but the first hearing is next Thursday, the 26th.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll make sure to share that. Am I good to start? Okay, awesome. Really good to be here. Really happy to have you all here. I believe I need screen share. Let me double check if it's already, oh, it's already on. So I, as was mentioned, my name is Dan Kaminsky. I work for an organization called Citizens Union. That intro was, was already given. Can you see my screen? Okay? Yeah, okay, great. All right, so today we are going to be talking about redistricting. A, this can be a really confusing topic and I want to make sure that it's kind of ground home to everybody, why it matters as much as possible. But I also want to make sure that there's plenty of time for questions and things like that. So really, if something feels confusing, please let me know and I really want to make sure to answer any questions. We have done, as mentioned, kind of the watchdog work about redistricting. But today is the civic engagement piece where we're trying to explain not only what it is and why it matters, but hopefully to get you involved. So at the end of the day, that is my number one goal here is if even one of you testify in front of the commission about what your neighborhood's lines should look like. To me, that's a huge success. So that's really, you know, why I'm spending my evening, what I'm hoping can happen at the end of this. Also, as was mentioned in the beginning, the redistricting has been dominating the news recently for all the wrong reasons. And it's been dominating the news at the state level. And so this can also feel really confusing. It will be totally understandable if you hadn't even heard that city council redistricting is happening. So today we're gonna kind of extract what's happening from the news and just focus here on New York City as opposed to what's happening everywhere in the state. But because of how important that that is as well, I can also make sure to leave time at the end to discuss and give a quick overview on kind of what's happening and the drama happening at that level. But today, everything I'm going to say for the next however long I talk for, we'll only be talking about New York City and New York City Council specifically. So in terms of what we're talking about today, at a basic level, what is redistricting, why it matters, how to get involved, those three things. A little bit deeper, I want to go through the criteria that are, that mapmakers use to draw the maps. How the process is going to unfold and then how to give an effective testimony. So the elements that, you know, are used in a, in a testimony that is, can be persuadable. So to start us off, what is redistricting? At the most basic level, redistricting is the process that happens every 10 years after the census has occurred. And it's the process where new district boundaries are drawn. And those boundaries should take into effect into account the population and the demographic changes that occurred over those last 10 years. And I'd say just to start off here, but it's something I'll talk about throughout, why it's important. You know, depending on what the district looks like, the boundaries of the district will change who the voters in that district are. As you change the voters in the district, you change who they can vote for and the type of people that will get elected. And then when you change the people that are elected, obviously the points of views, the representation, the, you know, the understandings obviously change with it and therefore the types of legislation, what's funded, et cetera. On the right here are the boundaries of the current city council map. And, you know, we can look at your district specifically. So the, the body that draws the maps is called the Districting Commission. It's made of 15 people. We'll go through that later. And they have to follow four rules and they should follow four other rules. So there's a total of eight rules that they're supposed to use, eight criteria that they're supposed to use when they're drawing their maps. They're not just kind of creating maps that they think it should look like, but they're supposed to be following a set of parameters. The first four that I have here are rules that they have to follow. So I want to take these one by one. So the first criteria is this idea of one person, one vote. And what this idea means is that each district should have roughly the same number of people in it. Right? Because if, let's just say as an extreme example, one district has one person in it and one district has a million people in it. Obviously, the level of representation in those two districts is going to be radically different, right? The, the level of power afforded to that one person versus the, each of those million people is going to be incredibly skewed. So each district should have about the same number of folks in it. To get that population, the ideal population, as it were, as it's called, is the total population of that city divided by how many districts are in that city. So in this example here, let's just say theoretically there were 100 people in New York and we had five council districts to have the ideal population, it would be 20 people per council district. Now let's use some real New York numbers. So the 2020 census had counted 8.8 million people in it. It's the largest census in New York's history by a long shot. It's actually about 600,000 people more than we've ever had before. And New York City has 51 council districts in it. So when you do that basic math, you get an average, an ideal population of 172,000 people in it, right? So every district should have about 172,000 people. But a 5% deviation is allowed. So what that means is, you know, the expectation isn't that every district has the exact same number of people in it. You're allowed a 5% deviation, meaning the smallest district in New York City over the next 10 years can have 100, can't have less than 168,000 people. And the largest district in New York City can't have more than 177,000 people in it. And keep in mind, once these district lines are drawn, they will be implemented for a full decade. So this is the new districts that you will live in after they are made for 10 full years. So let me exit the presentation for a moment and just look at your city council districts. So from my understanding, you all, most of you live in Council District 40. So this here is the census data broken up by council district. So if you see here, your council district as of right now has 155,000 people in it. If you remember the numbers that I just said, that is way under population, right? The ideal population is 172,000 people in it. What that means is that your council district is going to have to grow by almost 20,000 people. How that happens is inherently political, right? Or I shouldn't say how, but who ends up coming into your district? How those lines are drawn has an effect on who you're going to be able to represent and who, or rather who you're going to be able to elect. What part, what parts of what neighborhoods, et cetera. 20,000 people are going to all, all of a sudden be in your, in your district, right? So ideally, it is you all who live in Council District 40 saying, hey, I live here. This is how I think those 20,000 people should be added. And it actually provides an opportunity, which we'll talk about later. Because if there's a neighborhood that's cut off into multiple council districts, right? Well, now you can theoretically add them all into your council district or again, depending on numbers, but, or, you know, if a community of interest is cut off, all these terms will, will go over more. So that's Council District 40. But the question with 40 is not if the lines are going to change, because we know for sure they will be changing. The question is how? And ideally, that how is answered by the people who live in the district. And then I know, Rona, it's, it's 40 and 45, correct? That people mostly live in here? Okay. So let me just scroll down to Council District 45 here. So interestingly, it has the same thing happening. So it only grew by 3,000 people over the last 10 years. That's very much not the case with a lot of council districts. So it's going to also need to gain somewhere in the range of 15,000 to 20,000 people in it, right? So both of these districts that this club is located in are going to be growing over the next decade. I will, just as a side note, I'll be sending these slides along with everything I go over today to, along to Rona, who can then send them out to everybody else. Now I want to pause here. That's probably one of the more confusing parameters. So I just want to pause and just see if there's any questions yet. Okay, great. Again, I will leave plenty of time for questions at the end. Or I will, I'll try. I know there's other stuff you want to talk about. Okay, the next criteria is protecting minority votes. This is the language in the Federal Voting Rights Act. So in 1965, arguably one of the more important things to come out of, more important piece of legislation to come out of the civil rights movement is this Federal Voting Rights Act, which forbids maps to dilute the voting power of both racial and language minority groups. So what that means, let's say, in this set of lines is a protected group from the Federal Voting Rights Act. A new map could not do what is here in the box to the right, because that would dilute the power of that group and that is not allowed. So it's federally, this is federally protected, not only from the city level. Now, one thing to say about this, and this gets a little complicated, but is that, so one of the most important things that the Federal Voting Rights Act did was set up this idea of preclearance. And what that did is that any jurisdiction with a history of discrimination had to by law send in their new maps and any changes to their voting apparatus to the Department of Justice. And only the Department of Justice, once they had to provide preclearance or preapproval, and only once they approved it, could then that locality make that change. In 2013, in one of the most disastrous decisions, in my opinion, of the Supreme Court out of the last decade, maybe until two weeks ago, but that's another story. Scrap this preclearance requirement. And so, you know, all, we've seen a rise of voter suppression laws and everything like this. This is in direct response to now these, these jurisdictions not needing to get preapproved for any changes they make. Anyway, coming now to New York City, though. This likely will surprise nobody, but New York City had a history of discrimination in its mapmaking. And so every decade, we had to send in our new maps to the Department of Justice for preapproval before those new maps could take effect. And those new maps, not only, sorry, that, that submission to the Department of Justice not only included the new maps, but included the justification for how they came to those lines. Examination of why they were non-discriminatory and examination of the process to prove that they did so in a way that ensured all voices were heard. So this, I put this image to the right here. That's the front page of like a 300-page document. And again, this is the first time where we don't have to do this preclearance process because of the Supreme Court decision. So as an advocacy organization, that's something we are concerned about. We're advocating that even though they don't have to submit for preclearance, they still provide justification to all New Yorkers why they chose the lines they did and, you know, proving it was non-discriminatory, things like that. The next two criteria are, I think, a good deal simpler. So contiguous districts, this is not going to be super relevant for either of your districts. Which is just the idea that a district should be contained in one place. It shouldn't be, you know, a part here, a part there, a part there. And then crossover districts, also not really relevant to all of you. This is the idea that if a district crosses over county lines, that can only happen one time per set of two boroughs. Again, you're not crossing over into Queens or Staten Island or anywhere else. So I don't think it's going to be relevant for either of your districts. So those were the first four criteria. Again, all of those four, the mapmakers have to follow. They're required to follow all of those things when they're creating the maps. These next four, the language and the charter is something like as much as possible. So they are not required to, but they need to try to. And they need to try in the order that I put them on this screen. So keeping neighborhoods and communities of interest intact is the most important. Followed by keeping districts intact, et cetera. So again, we'll do each of these one by one. So a community of interest, keeping communities of interest intact. So I'm just going to read this definition verbatim here. A community of interest is a neighborhood, community, or group of people who have common policy concerns and would benefit from being maintained in a single district. Another way of understanding a community of interest is that it is simply a way for a community to tell its own story about what neighbors share in common and what makes it unique when compared to surrounding communities. It's defined by the local community members. So what stands out to me about this definition is that unlike those last set of criteria that I showed you, which has very strict rules on what is and is not allowed. This is the exact opposite, right? This is saying, hey, you all who live in that neighborhood, you tell us, right? The commission, you tell us as mapmakers what your community is and what should be kept together in these maps, right? So I'll provide some examples, but really at the end of the day, it is up to you to decide and you can throw all these examples out the window. Because whatever you think your community is and whatever you think how your community should stay together, that's the right answer. There's no, there's really no wrong answer on this one. So some common, some common communities of interest, ethnic, racial, and economic groups, right? So one thing to say is race alone can't be a community of interest. So you can't say I'm of the same racial background as my neighbors and we should all be kept in a community of interest. That more falls under that other criteria of Voting Rights Act and voter dilution. But you can absolutely, as long as it's connected to a policy concern, whatever that is, you can say, we are, we are connected and we need to be kept in a district. The second one on here, economic groups, right? So you can absolutely say if you're of the same class background as your neighbors, you can say, oh, you know, these blocks are of a similar socioeconomic status. And that class status has a bunch of concerns, policy concerns to it. And that, that set of policy concerns need representation on city council and therefore you should keep us together in a district. Places that share religious affiliations. Areas within a single school district, right? So oftentimes, school districts are cut between many different council districts. And it can be advantageous to have a school district entirely represented by a council member so that they are fully concerned and fully know what's happening in that school district, right? So saying that that's your community of interest. Areas with shared public transportation, right? So New York City runs on that. Let's say you're a bus, a bus commuter. And, you know, you want everybody in your neighborhood within that bus line to be in a council district so that you can have stronger advocacy pushes for a council member. Communities that share similar professions, right? Maybe you're a nurse and, or doctors, you know, and, and you live around a bunch of other people in that profession or a taxi driver, a school teacher, whatever it may be. And all of those professions come with a lot of different policy concerns and you, that, those set of policy concerns need representation on city council. So saying you should be represented and put together so you can be represented. Again, so these were some examples, but really you can, you know, hopefully to get your mind going on, on what it might be. But you can throw all those out the window and really whatever you think your community of interest is and how you should be contained geographically with your neighbors in a way that ensures your viewpoints and your policy issues are best represented, that's what to go with.
Um, Dan, I'm not sure if you're entertaining questions now or later.
I'd be happy to.
There's a question in the chat about can they, and I'm assuming there is like the people who are drawing the lines make this decision on redistricting without communities being aware? And how can we get the communities involved to sign against this?
That's an awesome question. Let me, let me, I'm going to essentially answer that just in, in the next section. It's an awesome question and it's kind of why I'm here at the end of the day. And if you don't, whoever asked that, if you don't think that I've answered that thoroughly enough, ask me again and I'll be sure to elaborate even farther than I already have. But there's a, a set, next section is on the process of how this goes and I should definitely answer that then.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No, no problem. Thanks for, thanks for stopping here. Okay, so here's, I'll say upfront, I'm not a graphic designer, maybe obvious by my presentation, so I excuse the not particularly well crafted image here, but hopefully it'll get a point across, which is, let's just say that this is our city. And let's just say that these lines here are the district boundaries. And let's say that this circle is your community of interest, whatever that is. And let's say these other circles are other communities of interest, whatever those are. So if these are the lines, whoever is the representative for this red district is probably going to take into account the concerns of these communities of interest far more seriously than they would the tiny sliver of your community of interest that is of concern, right? So you represent less voters, you know, you, you're less of a force in the community. And so probably a lot louder in that council member's ear is going to be these communities of interest. That result could mean that whatever your concern is, whatever policy issue it is, whatever is going on could receive less funding, could receive less legislation, could receive less advocacy, less attention, less notice, et cetera. And then all the condition that you're trying to raise attention to could get worse, right? So where redistricting comes into play or where this matters is we now have the process to redraw district boundaries. And so let's just say that same city or that same example was redrawn like this. Well, now whoever's covering this, whoever's representing this red district is going to have to pay attention to your community of, community of interest or your policy concern because you're kind of the heart of their district, you represent a majority of their voters. And so, you know, obviously the, the opportunity for your concern to be heard and represented and acted upon is far greater with this map than it was with this map. So hopefully that's a visual kind of cue of, of why this, why this, why this matters, why this process matters. Okay, essentially the last criteria I'm going to talk about before moving on to the process is keeping neighborhoods intact. So similar to keeping communities of interest intact, neighborhoods as well should be kept intact to as much as possible. And here I want to jump into, to your districts and look at what's going on. So this is the population, New York City's population fact finder tool. It's an amazing, amazing tool. If you have some extra time worth clicking around on and just experimenting with. But what we'll do, so first thing I'll do is click, is click Neighborhood tabulation area. So that's going to do a split New York City up into the neighborhoods. And then the next thing I'm going to do is click Add Map Layers and click New York City Council Districts. So now that's going to split not only the neighborhoods, but also the districts and that's what the blue lines are. Okay, so now I'm going to zoom in to, so I'll start with Council District 40. So we see here these blue lines, this is the, the, the boundaries of District 40. And if I look at a bunch of your neighborhoods, I see that they're cut in half, right? So I'm going to click Flatbush here. Now it's going to highlight Flatbush and Flatbush is cut right down the middle of the neighborhood. I'll click East Flatbush. The same thing is happening here, right? We see that the line goes, goes through it. And then Flatbush didn't miss somewhat the same, same thing as well. Then if we come down to 45 here, we see that's happening with flatlands, right? Flatlands cut in half between 45 and 46. Midwood is cut into three different districts. 44, 45, and 48, and happening in a few other places as well. And so what that means is that for those neighborhoods, instead of having a council member that fully represents the neighborhood, one side of the block is going to be represented by one council member and you cross the street and it's going to be represented by a different council member. And similar to what we're talking about with communities of interest, that can certainly affect the representation that, that that neighborhood is afforded. So trying to unite neighborhoods fully under, under district, oftentimes a lot of neighborhoods want that. Again, because both your districts have room to grow, have to be expanding. It provides an opportunity to unite neighborhoods or communities of interest that were split under previous, in previous decades during the redistricting cycle. One more thing about this tool, if you click a neighborhood, you can click View Data. And then you get the full breakdown of how many people live in that neighborhood. You know, what the demographic data is, housing, age, race, everything, everything going on in the neighborhood. And you can even, even do it by census tract if you want. So you can really kind of get pretty granular about how we could theoretically, if you do want to unite a neighborhood as an example, how that would look in terms of population. All right, I'm going to jump back to the slides here. Okay, compactness, this is another one, not super relevant to you all, but you know, just keeping neighborhoods in shapes that make sense. Not, you know, crazy lines, crazy squiggles, but ideally shapes that are compact. And then gerrymandering, it should not be gerrymandered. Okay, the final thing in this section that I want to talk about is what does your council member do? So really, you know, how your lines are drawn affects again, which I said at the beginning, who the voters in that area are, which that in turn affects who ends up getting represented to council. And that really affects your experience in the neighborhood. And, you know, what I like to say is that virtually look out the window and what doesn't your council member do, right? What doesn't, don't they have an effect on? Your parks, absolutely. Your trash, your roads, your potholes, your schools, your police, your teacher, you know, really you go down the line. And what's happening in your local neighborhood is, I would say, most affected by your council member. You know, we think of obviously Congress who represents you is so important and, you know, your senator at the federal level is so important. But if you want to talk about hyper local issues, it's really your council member, you're, you know, your life in your neighborhood. It's really a council member that's going to have an outsized impact on how things are going in your specific area. So to give some specific examples, council members have broad use over land use, right? So in a rezoning application, there's this tradition of member deference, which means that when a rezoning application is voted on by city council to go through or not, typically the rest of city council votes how the member of that neighborhood votes. And so it gives them very important powers over, you know, is a 30-story tower being built in your neighborhood or not? And so that affects the built environment. How does your neighborhood feel? You know, what is happening there? They have discretionary funds, right? So each council member has millions of dollars to spend in your neighborhood for different projects. City council is the legislative body of New York City. So they're the ones that write the laws. So if whatever issue that most concerns you, it is the city council that would be the one to write legislation about it. They provide budgetary oversight, right? So arguably the most important thing our city does is decide what to fund and what not to fund, or rather how much to fund it by. And city council plays a vital role in that process. I would say a budget's a moral document, right? What are we, how are we choosing to spend all of our money? And then they provide constituent services at the most local level, right? So that's a very brief overview, but hopefully this, this shows really your council member, I'd say of all the levels of government, your council member is your closest level of representative. To say that who you're represented by does matter. Okay, so that's oopsie, come on. Now let's go into how this is all going to unroll. So who draws the maps? The maps are drawn by a 15-member body called the Districting Commission. Those 15 members were just appointed two months ago. They're appointed new, new every decade. The mayor appoints seven of those members and city council appoints eight of those members. Of those eight, three are appointed from the Republicans, five are appointed by the Democrats. They've already been appointed. They got, as I said, appointed two months ago. They elected their own chair, a guy named Dennis Walcott, who may sound familiar. He's the current head of the Queens Public Library, but he's the former education chancellor. So he's, he's the, he's the current chair. Okay, so now let's talk timeline. So my, my first deadline here is June 7th, but actually there's a deadline prior, which they just announced yesterday, which is crazy. So let me, let me say that, but I'll start here in June. So June 7th is when the commission's deadline to present these draft maps to the public is. So in about three weeks, they will have to present their new lines, what they're proposing for the decade to New York City. Yesterday, they announced they will be doing a preliminary hearing. That preliminary hearing That preliminary hearing is May twenty-sixth at three P M at Pace University. Uh, again, I'll include that in the follow-up email with details on how to register if you want to, uh, register, uh, to check in remotely. I strongly encourage as many of you to testify as you can, uh, we'll go over testifying soon. Um, but that testimony, uh, those testimonies help inform those first map. So you know, the first round of maps that get created, uh, this, they would ideally base it off of the testimony of what they think or what they hear citizens throughout the city want their maps to look like. Thirty days after they publish these, these first drafts, they have to do summer hearings, so if you don't make it in May, there's plenty of time for July. So they have to give a thirty-day window to allow New Yorkers to look at it, to digest it, to consider what they want to say. And then starting in July, they'll be doing a hearing per borough, so they'll be coming to every borough. We don't know the dates or times or logistics yet, but they will be coming to Brooklyn. Um, and you know, and listening to what everyone has to say about this, their initial round. A month after that, those rounds, the commission will submit the maps to city council. City council will have three weeks to reject the maps. If they don't reject the maps, then they will automatically be implemented and that's the end of the, the process. And we'll be, we'll have our new maps for the next decade come end of August, early, uh, September. If city council does reject the maps, then it triggers a second round in which, uh, they would do a second draft. In November, they would do a second round of hearings, just like they did, uh, the first round, one per borough. And then in December, they have to submit that final draft of their maps to city council. Now, if nine out of fifteen commissioners vote to accept this final draft of the maps, city council has no authority to reject them. Right, so something we saw at the state level is that the state elected officials ultimately took control of the process and obviously threw everything into chaos. We think that the city process is inherently more independent, inherently more fair, because elected officials don't have control. It's the commissioners who have control at the end of the day. And city council cannot change, cannot reject, cannot alter the plans in any way, uh, so long as the majority of the commission, or rather nine out of the fifteen commissioners vote to approve the maps. Um, now, six months after that, the next primary is, right? So typically, uh, council members were, uh, are in four-year terms. But because of redistricting, because everyone's going to be in new districts, uh, then city council members have to run again right after these maps are implemented, uh, and then the primary for that year, you know, will be June of twenty twenty-three. So that's the sort of full timeline, full spectrum here. I'm going to skip a few just to, to be, uh, conscious of time here. Um, okay, so the next thing to say, so, uh, you know, a- as I said before, um, they're coming to every borough, they're required to listen to the testimony, they're not necessarily required to, uh, enact the testimony, uh, enact what people would say, but often they do, and this is something I'll show you, uh, in a couple of slides from now. But we strongly encourage people to build their own maps, um, in, if they're going to testify. And we encourage that because this is a geographic exercise. And so saying to the commission, hey, please keep my neighborhood together, well, that's great. But if you say, hey, please keep my neighborhood together, here's what I had in mind and show them exactly what you're envisioning your district should look like, that is a far, far more powerful testimony. Um, so there's a lot of user-friendly software, a lot, a lot of times when I say build your own maps, the walls kind of go up for people. Uh, and I want to knock those walls down, uh, and just make this as user-friendly as possible. So representable.org is one website that we're recommending, there's actually many different district building websites. Um, but this is one where it shows New York City by census tract. And you just click around, uh, census tract to census tract, there's a population counter here at the bottom. So you can make sure that you're kind of going to be within that ideal population. Uh, so just so you see what it looks like, so I just clicked a bunch of census tracts in the middle of Manhattan to get to a hundred seventy-two thousand people, again, that's the ideal population. Um, just to clarify, I'm not recommending this as a map, uh, and actually nor could this be a map because it wouldn't fit in, maps are a puzzle piece, right? And this is not, this would not fit in with the current set of maps. But just so you can see what it looks like, so again, I just clicked a bunch of census tracts, got to my desired population. And then you can download it as a PDF and send it into the commission, right? And so we really do, you know, I mean, this map, I wasn't thinking about it all that strongly, just, this took me five minutes to make, right? Uh, you know, hopefully you spent a little bit more time than that on it, but it really cannot be, uh, it really can be, you know, somewhat into, somewhat user-friendly, uh, as I say, so, um. Oh, and then that population fact finder tool, which I showed you before, if you kind of do it in, in line with that, you know, and keep track of sort of who's, what are the, what are the breakdowns of the district, who's in, you know, what are the population, age breakdown, housing breakdown, uh, racial and ethnic breakdown, et cetera, and you can just get a feel for the district that, you know, you're hoping to, uh, to create to send into the commission. Okay, um, the final, uh, the final, actually a few more things to talk about, but the final section here. So how to craft an effective testimony? We think that if you have these four questions answered, you've done an, an effective job. And those four questions are, who are you? What's the issue? Why is it an issue? How should it be resolved? As I said, i- if you answer those four questions, that's essentially all the commission needs to hear. Um, so to break those down a little bit, who are you? So your name, where you live, and, and this may feel a little uncomfortable for people, but keep in mind, this is a geographic exercise, right? And so they need to know, you know, saying that you're a community member, you live in this neighborhood and you've been here for ten years, twenty years, fifty years, five years, whatever it is, helps credentialize you and it kind of puts into perspective, okay, I'm a community member and I'm, this is coming from my experience of what it should be as someone who has to live here, someone who does live here. Uh, personal background, right? So keep this brief, you really want to only give a few words. You only give, you only get three minutes in a testimony, that's not a lot of time, right? So you just want to say, just to help kind of credentialize you. And then your organizational affiliation, so at the very least, you're all affiliated with the Shirley Chisholm, uh, uh, Democratic Club. Um, but, and that helps add weight to your testimony. So an example from ten years ago of this who section. Good evening, my name is so-and-so, I've been a Queens resident for more than ten years and live in Rego Park. Uh, again, this kind of credentializes this person, okay, we, we know that they're a community member to take seriously. I'm a counselor at Brew College, right? So that's the personal background, she did it in six words, uh, you know, straight to the point, just so that they know the background. And then I'm testifying as a ten-year member of O C A organizational affiliation. So she did all of those things in just a few sentences, this whole intro would be maybe fifteen, twenty seconds, right? That's, that's perfect, gets all those things, credentializes her, it's clearly someone we're going to pay attention to. Okay, then move on to your what section. So why are you here, right? What, what's the issue, what's the concern, uh, what do you want the commission to remember? Um, so here, this is kind of your main point, right? That I live in this district and the current maps split my community of interest, whatever that it, community is, into multiple council districts, I'm here because I want to make sure that my council district, and then my community of interest rather is in one council district. Uh, or maybe it's that the old lines kept the community of interest all in one district and I'm here because I want to ensure the lines remain the same. Uh, or maybe the new maps remove the hospital from your district and I'm here to ensure that the hospital is drawn back into my district. Uh, whatever it is, right? Uh, this same woman who I showed you a slide ago, uh, her what section of her testimony, just straight to the point. Proposed District twenty-five divides Elmhurst primarily at the district's southwestern boundary. This boundary excludes an active part of Elmhurst that stretches to the LA, right? So I can tell you, why is she here, what is she concerned about? She's concerned that an active part of Elmhurst has been cut off, uh, has been excluded from District twenty-five. So then, okay, we know why you're here, but why does that matter, right? So what, so what that, the, the district cuts off part of Elmhurst, why does this matter to you? Why does this matter to your community, or how does it affect your community? And is there evidence to show that it affects your community? So here, when we think about, uh, evidence, we think of, there's anecdotal evidence and data. Anecdotal evidence is great, um, but if you can spend a little time getting demographic data, census data, data from budgets, maps, anything that's more concrete, it'll sort of add weight, as I said, to your testimony. Um, so an example, uh, you know, my community of, of interest is split. Um, and then provide a map. Show, show, okay, well, look, you can't argue, this is the, the map and this is where it's split. Uh, this split has meant lack of funding when compared to other communities of interest, uh, in the district. Provide numbers, right, show tangibly, okay, look, that you can't deny that this is the case. This lack of funding has meant all sorts of issues that the community cares about, has gotten worse, provide information. Then end with, what do you want the commission to do, right? So we know that your community of interest is split, we know why this affects you, now how should it be resolved? Uh, and here you want to say in geographic terms how you want it to resolve, so not please unite my community of interest, okay, well, that tells them something, but specifically, please move the southwestern boundary of the district to whatever avenue, uh, to unite the community. So now they know exactly what you're asking and what you want to see happen with your, with your district. Um, okay, some best practices, um, in verbal testimony, as I said, be concise and to the point, uh, you don't, you only get three minutes. Practice ahead of time and time yourself, right? So make sure you're under that three minutes. And like all public speaking things, speak clearly, speak slowly, make eye contact, take deep breaths, remain relaxed, all of that sort of thing. Um, provide a map, which we went over, provide a copy of written testimony. So your written testimony doesn't have to be word for word, you're a verbal testimony, it can be. But you can also, if you didn't get to address all the points you wanted to in those three minutes, you can elaborate as long as you want in that, in that written testimony and, and fully show what you're hoping for. Uh, the last two I'll cover here is their strength in numbers, right? So it's great if you alone show up and say, you know, please unite this neighborhood, um, that's something. But if all of you or several people from the neighborhood show up and say, are saying a similar thing, well, it's much harder for the commission to ignore. Um, and then the, in some ways the opposite of that is something is better than nothing. So yes, organizing your community to show up to these hearings can take a lot of work, yes, creating your own maps can create, take a lot of work. Yes, um, you know, finding data is a lot of work. If you don't have time or capacity for that, we get it, uh, we hope that you do, we hope you'll consider creating time and capacity because of how important it is. But even if you don't say something, right? Something is better than nothing, even if you just go and say one thing about what you think the district should look like, that's better than not saying anything at all. Um, so we really want to encourage folks to show up, uh, regardless. Um, now, one thing I want to get to, uh, as well, and, and kind of response to that last, the, the question that was asked before, so uh, this here is the, um, the staff memorandum, which is the, the justification from ten years ago, why they chose the lines that they did ten years ago. And this is, uh, something I want to show for a few reasons, so firstly, let me just zoom in, so let me, let's look at District forty. Um, okay, so it starts with District forty covers, and this is again from two thousand twelve and thirteen, why they chose the lines that have been in place for the last ten years. Uh, it covers these neighborhoods. Over the last decade, the black population in central Brooklyn declined significantly. Now, we see the same thing has happened this decade, if I, uh, scroll to District forty again, um, we see the same trend has been occurring in the council district, right? So we look at the black non-Hispanic share of the population in twenty-ten, sixty percent of residents in Council District forty, uh, were black, non-Hispanic. And in twenty-twenty, it's down to forty-seven percent, right? So it's no longer majority, and so in redrawing the lines, obviously an opportunity to ensure that it becomes the majority again uh, for the coming decade. Um, so that was one thing they talked about. Second, under the two thousand three lines, the district is thirteen resident, thirteen thousand residents short. Okay, well, again, you're dealing with that same issue, uh, you're underpopulation. In order to comply with the equal population requirements, that's what we talked about, the revised plan expands the district on its southwestern border to add Kensington, a portion of Kensington, I should say. And then this is what I was hoping would happen and it did. Due to public testimony about a community of interest, the, the boundary between District thirty-five and forty is restored to Empire Boulevard between the preliminary plan and the revised plan. So to translate, their preliminary draft plan had something different. People from the community came out and said, hey, Empire really needs to be the district boundary and they listened. And so I'm showing that to you because unlike what happened at the state process, right? Where, eh, you know, I hope if people did, uh, you know, participate in that, I'm sure it's very easy to be disillusioned and frustrated because testimony was thrown out in the end. Uh, but that does not happen here in the city council process, right? They, eh, eh, we see, if we were to go through every single one of these districts, almost every single one includes a line like this, where it'll say, because people, you know, came out and everyone said they, they wanted this thing, we included that in the maps, right? So it's very routine that citizens have sway in what the looks, uh, the, the lines look like. Um, I haven't read forty-five ahead of time. Uh, but, okay, so here we go, same, same thing. Additionally, for forty-five, Victorian Flatbush, which is enclosed by Foster and Coney Island, is added to District forty-five in response to public testimony. So people, uh, from this part of Flatbush came out and said they want to be part of District forty-five, um, and so they did it. So hopefully that can kind of i- i- instill some, some level of confidence, uh, that the process, you know, that, that your voice can really and does really matter, um, in, in this redistricting process. Um, okay, so some final things, then I'll open it up to questions and I want to make sure we talked about the state uh, and that I can just do in three or five minutes at some point, but uh, this website, citizensunion.org/newyorkcityredistricting, we're treating as a one-stop shop for all things redistricting, council redistricting. So you can go there and, you know, we'll post the hearing dates when they come alive and, and everything like that. This is my email address, um, so please, please email me if you have any questions, if you want me to look over testimony, uh, to just get some feedback on it. If, um, you know, you just want to chat, uh, really, I'm happy to help you all engage in this process however I can. Um, my goal here is not to recommend any lines, because I don't live, uh, in central Brooklyn. My, my role here is to provide you the tools and information for you to dictate your own lines. Um, and then another thing to say is that we, we're really trying to go to every corner of the city. So if you know of other groups, uh, that could benefit from this training and kind of having us talk about redistricting and how to plug in, please connect me with them, because I would be happy to, uh, come by in person or Zoom any time of day uh, or evening, as you see, uh, and, and talk to them about getting involved. Um, so with that, I'm going to pause, uh, and happy to answer any questions that come, come up or did come up. Uh, I see Herman had a, had his hand up, it looked like, it was a physical hand, not a virtual hand, so I don't know if that, it was, okay. Uh, so I see Steve.
Yeah, thanks for that, uh, presentation, that was very informative. I, uh, just because you showed the demographic changes for District forty, I was wondering if you could quickly go over them for forty-five as well?
Sure. Um, but again, I will, this will, uh, uh, Ronar, you're okay to email this out to everyone who came? Okay, so you will get this in your inbox and can play around with all of these things as much as you'd like. Um, so here's forty-five, uh, so specifically, if we're looking at the black share of the population declined, but not as drastically from sixty-five percent to fifty-nine percent. Um, another interesting one to look at is housing occupancy. Uh, oh, this doesn't do rent over homeowner, but that, that, that can be an interesting one to look at. Um, and then the pop- population fact finder tool has a lot of other really, really useful data as well. So again, you will, you will get all those, all that stuff in your, in your inbox.
Thank you.
I had a question about like the census tract data because of what happened, with the census, where it was like cut off. And like, how does that? I mean, obviously it has an impact, right? Because they couldn't gather as much um, as many, you know, like the census takers weren't able to get to as many people. So I'm just curious like how that figures into all of this.
Yeah, it, it's a great question, and you know, I think that when the census process is happening, people don't realize just how important it is, or I shouldn't make that generalization, but like, there are so, so many things that that census process affects, this being one of them. And so, yes, the census, there was an undercount, uh, that, that seems pretty clear, you know, that not, uh, that there are more residents in the state that are currently in our census. And yet, that's the numbers that we have, and so that's the numbers that they use, um, at least for the population counter.
Really, that's interesting, so Steve put in the chat that the census provided information today that New York's population was likely overcounted by three point five percent.
So even if, even if that's the case, again, the census is the, the data that they use. Although theoretically, if you have, you know, I was, I was, um, presenting to a, a group the other day, um, a, a group that, uh, people may know them, the five- Um, a a group that uh, people may know them, the five oh four, or actually wasn't entirely a group, but some members of the five oh four Democratic Club. Which is a a group of disabled neighbors around New York, and they were talking about how the census data versus CDC data. Is radically uh different in terms of. Population of disabled New Yorkers, and so, you know, there's nothing precluding you in your testimony. Of saying, well, you know, the CDC counts this as this, and so please consider that when you're. But in terms of their, eh, when they're doing their population counting, um, it's based on the census. Anything else? Um. Okay, so. Uh, briefly to to chat about what's happening at the state process, um. So. Just from a quick kind of overview perspective, um. Historically, the people that drew the lines for our state level process, State Senate, State Assembly. And Congress uh was a committee called Latfor, which was made of elected officials themselves. In twenty fourteen, we all, or I don't know if you all voted for it, but uh, New Yorkers overwhelmingly uh voted. For a new constitutional amendment that's the. Instead of lap for creating the district lines at those levels, instead, they should be created by an independent redistricting committee. So empowered this committee, and well, this committee was made up of ten people. What it was supposed to be was four Democrats, four Republicans, and two independent, two neutral people that those other eight chose. And um, and those ten people. Created their, of a set of maps, if the legislature rejected the set of maps, they tried again. And then if the legislature rejected the second round of maps, then the legislature could take control of the process. And draw their own maps, but they could not deviate more than two percent from the maps that the independent redistricting commit, committee uh drew, commission drew. So that's how it's supposed to go. What happened instead is that it ended up being five Democrats and five Republicans on this independent redistricting commission. They could not agree on a a a set of maps, and so there was a Democratic map and a Republican map. Those maps were submitted, the legislature threw both of those maps out. And instead took control of the process and drew their own maps for all three levels. For months, that the assumption was, these would, the maps the legislature drew would be the ones that went into effect. Already, that's a pretty bad case scenario, because you don't want elected officials. Drawing the maps and, you know, we just approved this amendment to empower other people, and they took control of it. And all the testimony that New Yorkers made, you know, in many ways thrown out, I see your hands, Steve, let me just get through the the full. Um. And so, uh, da 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 da. So petitions hap- petitioning happened, candidates uh announced the election process was underway, a lawsuit ensued. And ultimately, the lawsuit went through, and what the lawsuit, uh, firstly, it named just the Senate and the congressional maps. It did not name the assembly maps, so it's just those two categories. And it said, because it didn't follow the constitutional process that voters approved. Uh, they were unconstitutional, and also that the maps were gerrymandered and deviated more than two percent from the initial maps. It went all through the courts, it took multiple months at multiple levels, um, ultimately landed the highest court in New York State, the New York State Court of Appeals. The court appeals throughout those maps. And instead appointed a special master, uh, a singular person to draw the maps. In my opinion, that's a pretty worst case scenario, right, and, you know, and didn't, didn't uh. Build in time for a significant public testimony comment. So this, this man is a guy from, he's a PhD from Pennsylvania, um, an academic. And he has drawn the maps uh with only, I think there was two days of public comment that were allowed. He just released this first, his first draft maps uh on Wednesday, sorry, on Monday. Uh, it's been a long week, uh, and then testimony could be until Wednesday, so if you didn't submit up until yesterday. Uh, the chance is now gone, and then he will be publishing his final draft maps tomorrow. Uh, the maps he published has thrown the political world into chaos, that's its own story, um. Uh, are you all, I, are you all represented by Clark, who's the? Yeah, so it's certainly relevant to all of you, because it puts uh Clark and Hakeem Jeffries in the same congressional district. So who knows what's gonna happen about that, but we'll find out for sure tomorrow, um. Uh, you know, in terms of final maps, and there's, I mean, it's very likely that another lawsuit will happen. It's, I think it's probably doubtful that the lawsuit against these new maps will go through just because of timeline. But again, you know, really, who knows, it's been impossible to predict, it's been a. Just truly wild ride these last few months with the state redistricting. The assembly, uh, not because it followed a different process, but just because it wasn't named in the original lawsuit, those lines did not get thrown out. There's a lawsuit that attempted uh to get them thrown out that failed because of timeline. And a second lawsuit just got uh put in, I believe, yesterday, uh, some, uh, Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday. And so we'll see, but again, presumably because of timeline, those will not go, get thrown out. So what that means is that we are still, as of now, having a. Primary for State Assembly, but also the other state races, so this doesn't affect Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Controller. Because those are statewide, so as, you know, the district, the boundaries of New York State have not changed, so. Uh, the their, uh, their elections are still on, and that's on for June twenty eighth. And then the the state and con- State Senate and Congressional uh elections have been postponed to August twenty third. Those candidates will have to petition again, get on the ballot again, start all over, and it's gonna, those lines totally change uh who's running and. You know, how it's all gonna look, um. We and many other organizations are lobbying. Pretty hard for them to consolidate the elections to August twenty third, so to take those June twenty eighth primaries. Uh, for Governor and those other uh levels, and move it to August so that voters only have to go to the polls once, because otherwise. The turnout is gonna be abysmal, not to mention, just, we're, we'd spend millions of dollars as a state uh administering these elections when they could all be won. As of now, Hokel is refusing to do that, um, presumably, that's a political calculation that she has a better shot of winning the primary in. June than August, because August means more time for a Cuomo type figure to come in, but she hasn't said this much, this is just kind of a. Ascertain uh via, uh, but anyway, so we and many other groups, uh, good government groups are pushing pretty hard for a consolidated primary in August. We'll see where that goes. Um, so that's the state in a nutshell, there's, you know, uh, Steve, I see your hand.
Yeah, um, I guess somewhat related to uh what you were just going over, um. I guess I was just curious, um, with regard to uh. How incumbency is factored in, if at all, um, I, I know when, you know, for, when the legislature. Um, you know, adopted maps, obviously, legislate, legislators themselves have a lot of interest in. You know, what what the district shapes look like, because they want to keep their jobs. Um, it looks like the special master kind of threw all that out the window, because we have so many districts that have multiple legislators now, uh. Multiple incumbents that that would be poised to run against each other if they run the districts they live in. So I was just wondering if you have a sense in this process, if incumbency is factored in at all, or.
You're talking about council, council?
Yeah, for city council, yeah.
Cool, so I did not, that that is one that, just because of time, uh. Uh, I didn't talk about much, but it's a great question, so I I think that I briefly sort of mentioned, um. Uh, one of the criteria is gerrymandering, now, in the case of New York City. Just because of the dynamics of New York City, the political dynamics, gerrymandering isn't really done to. Uh, to favor one party over the other party, because our part, you know. It's a really, pretty heavily democratic city, and it's not, that's not really the political situation here in New York City. Obviously, that's a huge issue in the state and around the country, of course, but that that's pretty relevant to New York City. So what they mean by gerrymandering, or what practically kind of the effect that it has in New York City is much more about. Drawing lines that favor or disfavor an incumbent or a political candidate. And that's much more uh what watchdogs and what mapmakers should not be doing, and that's kind of the the gerrymandering criteria here. And there's a lot of, there's precedent for that, right? So, um, a very famous story is back in twenty twelve. An assembly member named Vito Lopez uh was swarmed in scandal, you know, Bushwick Assembly Member. And calls were going for his resignation, and so Lopez ally met with the commissioner. And asked him to draw lines that included Lopez's house in a certain council district, so he could switch from assembly to council. Uh, and it happened, and so those twenty twelve lines included that. And it fortunately came out before the lines were finalized, huge uproar, and then they reverted back to the old maps. Or they threw those maps out and changed it so that his line, uh, his house was not in it. So those sorts of things, um. As an advocacy group, we're certainly uh concerned about, and the commissioners themselves are not, yeah. Not supposed to draw lines that favor incumbents, and we're pushing for them, and hopefully they'll do it, to adopt a conflicts of interest policy, because. You know, oftentimes commissioners have close relationships with incumbents uh or political candidates. And so they should recuse themselves in any relevant cases, um, that's one of the many, many things, we have a long list of things we're fighting for, and that's certainly among them.
I, I have another question about drawing lines, so. Just like. I mean, of, obviously, I'm not very experienced, but just like thinking of like, if we're having to include more people, like twenty thousand more people. In the district, and we're pushing into other districts, right? It seems like it has a ripple effect, right? Because then those districts technically become smaller if we're like expanding out, right? Then, then they have to expand out, or maybe they actually, the population in certain districts has actually increased. And so they, it it may, you know, they may become a little bit more compact, because they're. Um, you know, that more people have moved into that district, or, but, like, I just am thinking about the ripple effect of like. Expanding so that we're including more people, but it it has impact on the district surrounding us, right?
It's a great point, yeah, and and you nailed it a hundred percent, and I I kind of mentioned this offhandedly when I showed you. The district that I made, the the sort of fake Manhattan district, but. Yeah, it's it's a jigsaw puzzle, and so as you're thinking about how your district needs to grow, you would also inherently need to look in the districts around you and see, okay, well. You know, how does this district need to change, and you know, kind of consider a a a whole multitude of factors. Um, when you're creating your lines, and and that's one of the reasons why, you know. Just because you're asking for it doesn't necessarily mean the commission will do it, but they try to, but let's say you ask for something that wouldn't work with that criteria. That they have to follow in respects to the other districts, they may not be able to. And certainly, if you can look into that ahead of time and figure out what you want and how it combines or interacts with. Everything else going on, uh, that's gonna be very important for effectiveness there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great question, yeah. All right, so it seems like uh questions have have run out, so a- as I said, I will uh email. Rona, and then, you know, uh, hopefully, you know, sh- please include my email address in it, um, and so that whoever wants to email me can. Uh, and you'll get all the information I covered tonight, the PowerPoint I went over, really, you know, a whole bunch of stuff. Um, in it, along with the May twenty sixth uh hearing date, if if folks are interested. And otherwise, yeah, it's been a pleasure, please, please don't be shy, uh, if you have, if I can do anything to help you engage in this process, happy to.
One more question from Steve.
Oh, please. Oh, I think that's the clapping emoji.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I thought it was, yeah, oh, sorry, thank you, yes, thank you very, very much, this was very informative, um.
Yeah.
I I'm so glad that you were able, we were, I mean, we were trying to, we were going back and forth. A date for some time.
It is true.
And Dan was incredibly flexible, so really just appreciating that. And um appreciating you all for coming. Um, and again, unless there are any additional questions, I guess we will just adjourn. Uh, the meeting here, or if there are any other, I, actually, I would like to make. Um, one announcement, um, and I'll send this out in addition to like the um, the recording and everything. That Dan is going to forward to me, but there is a um, a transportation town hall. Um, Steve Cohen knows, uh, is like, uh, knows a lot about this already, but. Um, there's a transportation, in-person transportation town hall, um, where. Uh, a company, Dollar Ride, will um be soliciting feedback on it, on a green initiative that they are. Uh, forwarding um to electrify dollar vans, and they want to hear directly from community members about what that type of initiative. Would mean for them, some of the the challenges. That people see, what they feel could make the process better, et cetera, they're the finalist in a. Eh, for an ICERTA grant, it's a clean neighborhood um challenge, and um, and so. Uh, they're in phase two of that, and. Um, as part of this, they would like to get feedback directly from the community, so I hope that you all will come, I'll include that in the, the follow up as well. Thank you all, and have a good night. We'll see you next time.